All right, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for February 24th, 2014. Nineteen twenty four, yeah, 2014, I'll get that right. We're to begin by rising to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Good.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Mr. Forsyth.
Here. Okay, let the record show that we have a core of the President and we may conduct official business. First order of business being the approval or correction to the minutes of the last Board Meeting, which was February 10th, 2014, and a special February 10th, 2014 Board Meeting. So we've got two there. I'll take them, uh, motion separately on each one. The first on the regular Village Board Meeting on February 10th.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth to approve the minutes of the February 10th, 2014 Regular Board Meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and those are approved. Now, for the special Village Board meeting, the minutes were February 10th, 2014. Is there a motion to accept those?
Motion.
Second.
By trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and those are approved. Now, under accounts payable in the payroll, trustees, you have in your packet the payroll for the pay period ending February 15th of 2014, in the amount of $49,367.89. You also have accounts payable from the General Fund totaling $32,079.71, and the Water and Sewer Fund bills totaling $7,020.27. Now, within that packet of the General Fund is a check for Iroquois paving that is on the agenda later, in the amount of $15,956.9. So I will entertain a motion to pay the bills pending, with the check to Iroquois paving, pending approval later in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to approve the bills with the, holding the check for Iroquois paving pending approval later on the agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and the bills will be paid as noted. Public comment and/or questions? Is anybody here for anything that's not on the agenda later? You're agreeing it's on the agenda later, good. We'll move on to the reports of committees. The clerk collector report and the treasury report is in your packet, trustees, noting the receipts for the month. And if there's no questions on those, we'll move on. The chief is not available tonight for a police chief report. He's out on a call. And the engineer is not present this evening, so therefore there's no engineers report. That brings us up to old business, the Farmers Market Schedule request on the same day as the Peatone Car Show. So, Nicole, you gonna come up and talk about that?
I'm gonna go first, and I'll back you up.
Well, we talked to the car show committee, and we have agreed to work out arrangements so that we can both have our sessions on the weekend, then, since the last weekend in July.
Yep.
So, any other questions that you have, a little bit?
No, it's good that you're able to work that out, because, you know, having both those events go on at the same time, I think is gonna help both of you.
We're gonna have to see how big she grows, but I think there should be enough room on the east side of the Legent, between the tracks and Railroad Street there, one park lot, and if they need access parking, we have across the street.
Okay.
North of Crawford. And really, I could think that's the best spot, and if she wants to do it longer than a day, there should be no problem in that.
Okay.
We're really flexible. We thought, as it gets closer, we can work out the details, more on it, and then just kinda go from there.
Okay, did, as I recall, we tabled this, did we not?
Yes.
And so, having heard this, do we wish to, I think as an acronym, we would basically say, we approve the, the holding of the two events on the same day?
The, the Farmers Market Committee initially had a special event permit that was every Saturday from a certain, from eight to 12, or something like that, except for this day.
So we're amending that.
So you're, you'd be amending that to allow it to that day, on that day also.
Okay. So, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to amend the original special permit, events permit of the Farmers Market to also include the day of the car cruise.
Thank you.
Tell me that it was.
Clerk, please call the roll, and you've got it figured out.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
And Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and your special event permit is amended.
Thank you.
Now you're gonna have Sweetland out there, right?
All sorts of goodies. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Terre's Ford Inducement Agreement that we discussed the last time.
Cast is a copy of the proposed inducement agreement along with an enabling ordinance. The agreement incorporates the language and numbers discussed at the last Board Meeting, a ten-year term renewable in force discretion, a cap on rebate of $750,000, base of $167,200, ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty, fifty split for the first five years, and fifty after that, to the max. Mr. Cordino from Terre's Ford is here, if you have any questions. They have indicated that they are happy with the agreement.
Good.
That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're both happy?
Yeah.
If we're happy, we're happy.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve Ordinance 13-24, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an inducement agreement with Terre's Ford?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Wicker, to approve Ordinance 13-24, authorizing the execution of an inducement agreement with Terre's Ford. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Motion carries, three minutes through.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item relating to independent inspections contract.
Board requested additional information on some of the provisions in the proposed contract. In response to your questions, I received the revised contract attached. It does have references to forty-eight hours response time on inspections for business days. It had some information on insurance. So those were resolved. I also questioned IIL regarding the absence of a commitment for a weekly office hours. I received the following reply to that question, along with information on low revenue from Peatone for this winter. And I won't go into it, but basically they were saying for a certain period of time, they would agree to staff someone by appointment, and at the rest of the, for a few months, they would write, they would have someone here on a, one hour on a Thursday, and by I personally thought that to be a little disconcerting. Right now, if they're here two days a week, a minimum of an hour each day, and more if needed. They'd initially sent some things in, and said, well, if you increase fees by $15,000, we'll increase it by, we'll increase our, our time there by an hour. I spoke with them today. I said, you know, we've, we feel very, very strongly, I can't speak to the board, but I suspect that they're going to feel very strongly to having someone here a couple times a week. Over and above inspection is an important part of your service, you know. When we privatized, we went from forty hours a week to a couple of days a week. We've had some dialogue back and forth. I received another contract at three o'clock this afternoon that eliminates some of this verbiage, and they've agreed to, in an email, they've agreed to go back to two days a week, minimum of an hour each day, each day. So I think that issue has been resolved. So I guess where we're at is, I believe the board should find everything that they've asked about in this contract, in the revised contract, Contract B. I need to double-check, I'm, I'm very confident, but I just need to do due diligence and see that in Contract C, all of the language that we like in B has been carried forward, but I'm sure that it has.
So do you want us to put it on hold for the next meeting? Do you do that?
I, yeah, in the next meeting, I will actually have a resolution to, if the board doesn't see anything else tonight, I'll have it on the next meeting to adopt a resolution entering into the new agreement with IIL.
Okay, and you're gonna have an ordinance related to fees at that time?
Uh, probably, yes.
Okay.
If not, it'll be meeting after that.
All right, trustees, will you set us up with that?
I am.
Anyone have any, had any additional comments on the contract?
All right, then we'll move on with the, that being, we'll take it up at the next meeting. We'll have to officially table it. All right, next item is the Grand Scope of Work for the Illinois Bond Fund Infrastructure
The village has received an infrastructure grant in the amount of $100,000 for infrastructure projects. The board asks staff to forward some costs for several potential projects. Cost estimates were prepared by Robinson Engineering and are attached. As most of these projects are in excess of $100,000, staff is researching additional projects for consideration. And we're still researching some of these, see if we can still do a project, maybe reduce the costs. Some of this is, you know, no reflection on Robinson, but this is kind of a quick snap, and I think maybe a little more detail, we might be able to reduce some of the costs. I can, Jim and I were talking, we think some of the generator can come down, substantially more than what we thought it would be, and the street lighting seems a little high as well, but.
The water treatment plant generator, yeah.
Yes.
That seems huge.
Yeah. And again, that's, they did what we asked them to, and in a span of three or four days, turned some numbers around, but we think we might be able to fine tune those. We are not in an immediate timeline on this, okay? We've got a year and a half or so to spend the money, and there is no deadline as far as an application goes. So if we wanna look at this for another meeting or two, we can do that, okay? But, you know, if, if you've got other ideas that you want us to explore, that's fine. Otherwise, we're gonna continue looking at these, and, you know, at some point in time, we'll, we'll designate a project, and the board will designate a project, and we'll submit the application.
So is it your thought to just drill down on some of these numbers, then? Okay, it's not good. To drill down on some of these numbers, then, since we do have a little bit of time?
Yeah.
This is just to kinda get it out there in front of the board, see what their thoughts are, okay?
Did we get any kind of estimate on the, the covering for the, I think it was the fans or the generators that they're?
The blowers?
Yeah.
We have something in our five-year plan of $20,000 or $30,000, and right now, that's in our five-year plan. If I recall correctly, Jim gave me his version, his update this afternoon, my recollection is, there's some money in there for that. Obviously, this could be put toward that, but, but there is money in there for that. If we could get the, if we could get the generator down to a number that we had produced for us two or three years ago, you know, we might be able to use this, plus maybe skip a year of grouting or something at the wastewater plant, and that way be able to fold that into, into our budget. But we'll just have to wait and see. Like I said, these are, these are quick and, to some extent, quick and dirty numbers, because Robinson was accommodating and tried to get to this quickly, and when you do that, you don't look at all the ways you can.
Yeah, especially when it comes to the generator. We spoke with the architect that deals with the wastewater plants, and, you know, he sized that generator to run everything. So maybe, I don't know what, exactly what the needs will be, but we can talk about that, and hopefully we can get that price done.
George, on the Wilmington Road Bike Path, I know that's been a topic for years. Down here, it says that, that's assuming that Will County would allow the pass. Has there been any contact with the county to see?
We had some contact with them three or four years ago.
Yep.
Because this was actually, these numbers actually came from, I think it was an I-10 grant.
Yeah.
Where we tried to get money, some eighty-twenty money, I think, and we talked to them at that point in time. There was nothing in writing, it was verbal, pending, you know, award of the grant. But we don't think it's going to be a major problem, though they will have us sign off for liability and things like if the road has changed, if for some reason the road has expanded, it's our responsibility to move the sidewalk or abandon the sidewalk. It's not their fault to make us, it's not their responsibility to make us whole for that sidewalk. That's, that's the context of that, of that statement, and, you know, at that point in time, they were looking at, under the engineer at that time, they were looking at putting it all the way up off of the right-of-way as much, you know, as close to the edge of the right-of-way as they can, away from the road. So that's the context of, of that conversation.
Yeah, typically, the county is pretty accommodating to the request, but just what George said, you're gonna have to sign off for liability, and you have, it has to be clear that if there are any reasons to move it, it's on your dime.
Okay.
So that's why sometimes communities don't wanna do it, you know? Who wants that to pay for? But then you have to weigh that versus the chances that it'll ever be so wide, and then you'd have to move that bike path, so.
And I know that at the last meeting, there was a question about the possible existence of a right-of-way, a pedestrian right-of-way through part of Gold Landing. That, that doesn't exist. That's, the easement I was thinking of, and, and some others may have been thinking of, is actually simply a, a utility easement. It is not a right-of-way for, for a bike path or anything like that, so. Without acquiring additional, I don't wanna confuse terms here. There's the right-of-way of Will County. If we wanna stay outside of that, then we'd be looking at private land and acquiring right-of-way or indoor easements, probably easements, for all, for the length of that road and behind. And we were probably, they'd be bumping back up to the north side of Gold Landing, because we're not gonna be getting through those, through those lots, through those houses. So that's pretty much the way the route would go, I think.
A matter of curiosity, too, there was a reference in here to a federal grant available. If someone had died, we haven't had anybody, we've had injuries, correct?
Yeah, it's a shame, I mean, it's.
Well, I know. We're trying to be proactive, so nobody has to die.
Right. That, that would be the point.
Yeah.
Well, that was the point originally brought up with them.
Yeah.
That was the original.
They don't, they don't come right out and say, you won't get, you know, you won't get the grant if you don't have fatality, but when they put you, when they rank you on the list, all those with fatalities go to the top, and, you know, in essence, you, it's not worth it to try to go through the process.
The scoring is so weighted that that's almost, even though it's not a requirement, it almost is a requirement.
Yeah, and it would be nice for 90% funding, because then we could do it, and there wouldn't be any question. All right, so the, the feeling that I sense from the board is pursue the, the items that we have listed here, fine tune it more, and then we'll make a decision, seeing as we're not under the gun to make a decision.
And rather than have this on the agenda at every meeting, I think we'll just come back when we're ready with some numbers. Is that satisfactory to the board?
Yeah, sure.
And I think it comes back to, as long as there, there's no deadline, we have to meet on this.
We just watch the deadline, that's all.
Yeah.
Sometimes it changes a little bit, so, as long as you stay cognizant of that.
I specifically asked that question, and the answer was no, so.
You know, we've talked to them for a while.
Okay, then we'll move forward, you know, refining numbers on these items until we get to a point where we can make the best decision for those funds in terms of the future of the village. Having said that, we're going to move on to new business, the first with, first item of which is an ordinance, this would be Ordinance 13-35, to enter into a revised intergovernmental agreement for the Emergency Communications Services known as EACOM. George?
For several years, the village has belonged to a cooperative for emergency service communications, which is Eastville County Communication Center, or EACOM, as we all know and love it. EACOM dispatches our police calls. The following agencies also belong to EACOM. The villages of Crete, Beecher, University Park, and Moni. In addition to the following, fire agencies belong to EACOM, Beecher, Moni, Crete Township, and Peatone. The reason for the new agreement is the addition of three new agencies to EACOM, the villages of Staker and South Chicago Heights, and the Staker Estates Fire District. The inclusion of these agencies will provide additional revenues and economies of scale. The agreement has a minimum term of five years. After 24 months, the village may submit one-year written notice of withdrawal. So basically, you're in the agreement for approximately three years. We've been in EACOM since before I got here. We can't duplicate that service cost-effectively. The addition of Staker, South Chicago Heights, and Staker Estates Fire, worst-case scenario, it appears will keep our cost level this year as opposed to increasing. There's a very good possibility if, if Will County 911 grant, provides a grant for, for the transition and folding in the three, all the different agencies into EACOM, our, our costs could go down approximately $25,000 this year. We expect that to happen, but it hasn't, you know, the meeting hasn't been held, so we can't say for sure it will. Now, right now, our EACOM costs are a little over $100,000 a year for this dispatch.
And based upon, as, as being Z representative of EACOM from this body, I, we have been researching this, and it appears to be very cost-effective for us, as well as the other existing members of EACOM to do this merge, and we have prudently and judiciously encouraged everybody to look at the numbers to make sure they're realistic in terms of operating costs by bringing on these additional entities. And we believe that the operating costs that are projected will, will work with the number of additional personnel being brought on, and that we'll review it in a year and see if there's any need to make adjustments. But to be able to hold our costs the same or reduce it in this area, we have looked at other options. It's really expensive to do dispatch.
We get a pretty good service out of it, you know, we've been pretty satisfied with.
We got good people. So, this would be Ordinance 13-25, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Eastern Will County Communication Center, EACOM. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 13-25?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Riker, to adopt Ordinance 13-25, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for Eastern Will County Communication Center, EACOM. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Motion carries, and the intergovernmental agreement 13-25 with EACOM is officially approved. Next item on the agenda has to do with designating Mr. Robert Henke as the management trainee for Streets and Alley's. George?
Tom Blogg, the manager of Streets and Alley's, has submitted his notice of retirement effective June 20th of this year. Until June 20th, Mr. Blogg will retain full authority and responsibility for the operation of the department. In order to ensure an effective transition, the board may designate Mr. Robert Henke as manager trainee until June 20th, and it is anticipated that Mr. Henke will transition into a permanent supervisor of Streets and Alley's. And this mentoring program will assist in a smooth leadership transition in the department. So if the village, Village Board concurs, we simply need a motion designating Mr. Robert Henke as the manager trainee in Streets and Alley's.
Is there a motion to that?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Hack, to designate Mr. Robert Henke as the manager trainee in Streets and Alley's Department. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and Mr. Hack, or Mr. Henke, rather, is so designated. Two agents. All right, next item has to do with the check that we held out pending approval later. George?
Iroquois Paving Corporation completed the 2013 Street Maintenance Program. They have requested reduction in retainage on the project. They are requesting a payment of $15,956.9, leaving a retainage balance of $3,500. The work is protected by a separate one-year warrant. Staff has no problem with the reduction. And I believe you see a letter from Robinson Engineering incurring. Motioner proclaims the reduction.
Motion.
Okay, motion, motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to payment, to extend payment in the amount of $15,956.9 to Iroquois Paving, leaving a retainage of $3,500. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Motion carries, and the check is officially approved to Iroquois Paving. Brings us to the end of our official agenda. Are there any announcements or items to be brought before the board? New deadlines?
Duck eggs, last day of February, vehicle stickers, last day of March.
Okay, so the vehicle sticker folks still have the month of March to get it done.
Early voting starts.
Yeah.
Next week, Monday, from nine to three.
Early voting?
Through Thursday. Early voting, nine to three, Monday through Thursday, for two weeks. Next Monday.
See you next Monday.
That's what all of that stuff is back then.
Election is March 11th, correct?
No.
No.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth, yeah.
Okay. All right. Yes, and the, all the election stuff has been, we're directly wired, so the nice thing is Donna doesn't have to make runs of ballots to Jolieette. As the, the early voters vote, it goes instantly.
Automatically, right?
Automatically to them, so, you know, the system is gonna work.
One hopes.
Yeah, we had somebody in today because she was doing some work on it, after they installed it, and it worked, and there were some issues, and we discovered a little bit of electronic kick-up in, in what was going on, and got it straightened out.